I'm gonna call this meeting. It is 7:05 roughly, March 14th, 2019. We have L.A. school in the Spanish room. Hola.
How much time do I have to ask in Spanish?
Okay, listen, I have enough trouble speaking English. We may not try another one. We have before us a roll call.
Marty Kane.
Tom McGinn.
Jamie Lowery.
Rich Ginnon. We have approval of the agenda. Approval of minutes from February 28th, 2019. Citizens comment, new applications. There has been a change. You guys should have gotten an emergency change on the agenda. The original agenda had a presentation by the fire chief, but he's not able to make that presentation. He was going to be working with us, putting some stuff into effect, and he's made it. He's not going to be able to make it, so in his place, we put another item on. So the first, the new application, the first item is a Rundle machine, a plenary site plan review application for determination of completeness. And item number two is B&amp;B trucking, a plenary site plan review. His permit, or the time period in which he had to apply for it has expired, so we need to rule that it is null and void. And having talked with his agent, they're going to be resubmitting a different plan anyway.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Wong, that like, they were waiting for DOT on some of the stuff.
I'm not quite sure.
Coming down. That's why they were waiting on it, so it wasn't necessarily out to be.
It may not have been. It's just the timeframe has expired.
Yeah.
Then we have ordinance revisions. We can look at the proposed, a review of the proposed changes to the street design and construction ordinance proposed by the Ad hoc Street Design Committee. We have the public hearing on that next week. And then, time permitting, there will be a discussion concerning 10 acre lot subdivisions.
We'll move to approve with that changes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as changed. All those in favor? Aye. It is unanimous. Minutes of February 28th.
I don't think a motion will approve them as written. I do have one question. The food trucks, the performance statements were added.
I just included those for reference.
Just for reference, okay.
Yeah, and I did a little comment, you know, attached at the end of the minutes.
Okay.
Just strictly for reference purposes.
Okay.
Because I noted that, you know, some things have been taken away and some things have been added, so.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any other discussion?
Okay, you don't got it, man.
Marty, anything that you saw? Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor?
I was a second, I'm sorry.
Marty.
It is unanimous.
Nope.
Okay.
I was not involved.
I had that wrong way around.
Okay, at this point in the meeting, we have citizen comment. If you want to comment on something that is not on the agenda. Otherwise, when we get to that point in the agenda, we can discuss it. No comments? Hearing none, we'll close that section and we'll move into the new applications. Item number one, a Rundle machine, a plenary site plan review application, determination of completeness. A proposal to construct a 22,163 square foot expansion to the existing manufacturing facility located on 7.76 acre parcel, tax map 12 lot 7-3, located at 20 Technology Drive in the BI district with associated parking and site improvements. In addition, a Rundle machine also proposes to construct a new 11,000 square foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent 3.75 acre parcel, tax map 12 lot 7-2, with associated parking site improvements and interconnectivity with circulation and parking facilities on lot 7-3. DCP Properties is the owner and applicant of Paul Gasboy P. He is the authorized agent. What do you have for us, Paul?
Okay, so a year ago, pretty much exactly a year ago, I'm sure myself is wanting to hear that, but we came in front of the board to show you guys the sketch plan. It hasn't really significantly changed from the sketch plan that we're talking about. Back then, we were just trying to make sure we could be in agreement with what the shoreline zone requirements were. All the wetlands on site are all less than two acres, so we have no setbacks from the wetland existing on our property. Off the property, though, we did map a wetland that's five acres or over two acres. It wasn't really mapped exactly what it was. So that means we have to maintain a hundred foot setback from the edge of that wetland. So although the current building is already in that zone, we certainly are, all our new construction is outside a hundred foot setback line. And then, you know, we've been working with the DEP from then on until basically now. We did meet with Ari Albo in June, and she said that this, I had a stream showing here, and she's basically wrote a letter saying that it's on a stream, which allows us to actually bring and fill up the edge of wetlands and actually make the building a little bit wider than what we originally proposed. So the building from the sketch plan probably added some square footage.
Who is Ari Albo?
She, the DEP representative. She met with us.
Somebody on the NRPA side of things?
Correct. She had us onsite and said that it was a stream. I call it any stream if I see some sort of channel or some sort of, I just soon call it a stream. We were DEP, and so that's what we did on that particular.
They clarified.
They clarified. Since then, we've been going back to the DEP as far as the wetland fill. We're proposing to fill 13,657 square feet of wetlands in this area right here to provide any connection to the two sites. And more importantly, to provide additional parking that we need for the additional 30 employees that myself will be anticipating, to be hiring for the new building. I think we're gonna, we're gonna be okay with that. Funny thing on this site is, you know, when we did the original subdivision, we filled 14,000 square feet of wetlands. That included, and I don't have all the numbers here, but wetland crossing for the road, wetland crossing for Guy Road Bridge and by Tyre Warehouse. Kill on the 14,000, we'll say roughly square feet. Obviously, that was exempt from the fee. We did apply to the tier one or the tier one back in them days, so it was all legit. What they wanted to do is because we're over the 14,900 square feet of wetland fill, all this wetland fill impact, they wanted us to make us provide 14,000 past and a 14,000 current for a total price of $110,000 for the wetland fill permits. We just basically did some, you know, arguing back and forth, saying it's just not right, you know, because this road, obviously it's for our lots, not just for our lot. So they agreed that they would charge us the $4 per square foot just for the wetland impact associated with that site. We're gonna charge us the $14 square feet that was previously filled. So that's a price like $35,720 that myself have to check to the DEP for that. We did come to back in front of the town, I think the town on August 8th, basically on September 13th, said that the staff could review this minor addition that we had right here, so you guys made a determination. The staff can review that. We did a 40 by 40 additions to the existing garage because myself really needed the extra space in order to make room for new equipment that was getting in this existing building. DEP did approve that 40 by 40 addition, where a minor application for permit. So we got, September 21st, 2018, we got the permit to do the 40 by 40 addition from DEP. On September 10th, we have a public information meeting at myself's place of business. And required by DEP, they will make you have a public information meeting. We posted, we added a newspaper, the Journal Tribune, and nobody showed up. We sent all the bio-certified mail of saying that the project's still working on it. No one showed up at the public information.
But it was done?
Oh, we did, yeah. It has to be done per DEP's things. On September 12th, we met with DEP, we submitted the application. Myself paid the $10,000 fee to DEP to review this project. So that's basically when they got in hand on the September 12th. I think on the 18th, I probably just copied the application to the town because I was seeing why the town had copied the application. And then now that just kind of brings up the speed. It probably isn't a BI zone. It is a, it is an approved, it is a permitted use. What we're trying to do industrial is permitted in that zone. These buildings are all sprinkled, so the, you know, starting fire ponds, fire protection buildings will be sprinkled. There's an existing height though, right here at the corner of Technology Route 1. And plus, we'll be sprinkling the buildings, so it should be in pretty good shape as far as fire protection concerned. Flood plane, we're not in a flood plane, according to FEMA. I want to talk about Lansing, I'm a part of Lansing. Lighting, I do have a lighting plan. It didn't get submitted, I thought it was part of the application I gave to DEP. So when I sent the book out printed, that wasn't part of the application. The DEP doesn't need lighting plan as far as their criteria for review.
That was on my list.
You know, so it should have been impacted. I do have 12 sections drawn now, but I should have submitted data where I can be the one, if you even want to look at it. Basically, J and M Lighting or Jim Stockman is working on a lighting plan for this project. What he's proposing, what he told me that he would do would be just providing the minimum amount of light and required to light the parking areas. Obviously, we don't need maximum lighting. It's not a sales area, it's not the show, and it's for cars. So I said that would be sufficient as far as we're concerned. He did write a little compliance letter. He kind of goes through the ordinance. I'm sure Ted's seen, I've seen his work before, where he just basically summarized everyone, the checklists on the lighting plan.
And 20 pages? Huh? Is it 20 pages? 20 pages? Is it, he usually does about 20 pages.
Yeah, I mean, so he just goes through and addresses every comment. Bottom line, he just said the parking area to be lighting. The lighting, the lighting area is going to be 26 lights, moonrun 20-foot high poles, and that's 20-foot high above the finished grade. So wherever the finished grade is, we'll be 20 feet above that. And he said that we need to all invite all the requirements for the lighting standard. So I do have his report here. We do have this broken down, obviously you can't read this, so this is just the overall cover sheet, so you can see it. But it's broken down into three more sheets where you can actually read the numbers. Some of the people won't get, for the metric data. And I do have that, so you want to look at now, but.
Are you, you want to see it?
Off-street parking, you know, basically it's one space per employee in the maximum shift. What we're trying to accomplish is just getting any maximum parking that we possibly get on the site plan. So this will work for myself, for the existing buildings. For this one here, we've got 27 parking spaces allocated. And for the new addition, come the old and the new, we have 85 parking spaces. So hopefully that'll be sufficient for myself's use. As we, he said it will be. As far as solid waste, we're gonna have a dumpster. There is a current dumpster in the property, but we're gonna relocate this location. We are proposing a new dumpster at that location. Of course, all the trash, it's off the transfer station. I think it's Westbrook, and then from there goes Old Town. So there's no services, you know, nothing is going to the town of Rondo. You know, it's all to the transfer station. From there, we take Old Town.
Question on.
Yes.
Waste and stuff. Do you guys generate hazardous waste?
No hazardous.
Good question. Metal?
We have chips and stuff, we have that.
Just chips, nothing?
Yep.
All the chips are all stored inside.
Right.
So no outside storage of any product whatsoever associated.
So it's not gonna hurt the tires?
Correct.
Right. As far as the wastewater disposal, Tom Milligan has been hired by the applicants. You do still want to set systems to the site. We are doing an engine system here just because we're doing an actual new system because Tom didn't want to increase this system for the amount of employees we get now. So he thought it would be better to have an actual, a new engine system for the 30 new employees. We're doing a stone bed system at this location given for 27 employees. We do have a nitrate study analysis to show that that won't exceed 10 milligrams of the property line. And I'll go through that a bit longer. We did do the, like I said, the hydrological analysis that was done by Stonehill Environmental Services. Basically, she said that based on the nitrate loading, the subject wish for the disposal systems will not adversely affect groundwater and downgrade nitrate, nitrogen levels will be in compliance with the U.S. EPA drinking water standards prior to crossing a disney park. And so if you look at Stonehill, they did do the plume. So you can see the downhill plume, that's the disney parker line. They did show the plume, that one, and it also did disney park. Signs, we're not bringing any new signs. An existing sign right now in the corner of Technology Drive, Route 1, we're already slotted. The signs are already in place for three properties. Myself is the top sign for a run machine. There's two other signs there, painted blue. There's nothing on them right now, but we're utilizing that, daddy additional signs for the next building. So we're not having to bring new signs. It's already in existence, and the sign permit was paying back when that sign was put out. Sores, we have a medium, actually a medium high intensity soil survey in the packet that I might draw to know how. I don't think I really need to say too much more about that unless we're getting any questions. There's no outside storage at all on this property, so everything's stored inside. Stormwater management, we're gonna be constructing two filter ponds. We actually have an existing, this is an existing detention pond we did the project originally. It wasn't constructed as a filter pond because that was required back in them days. So it's moved from detention pond to pond to control. Our new filter ponds meet chapter 500 requirements for DEP. And these filter ponds also will handle stormwater management for the 210, 250 event, that's required by the town. So we have a pond here, and we have a pond right here. As far as access to the site, we did do, did have traffic solutions. William Brady just threw a little traffic study on the project. They did a count on Route 1. The bottom line was, he said that we'd only left any turn coming in the project, so it's not enough traffic, we don't have any left any turn lanes. So I do have that, you, we have a bottom line, and that's what it is. Basically what he said, with a lot of the numbers that I really didn't look at. Traffic coming in, traffic going out and stuff, but.
What is the, what is your employee count? My current employee count right now is, at this, in a Rundle is 68 right now. Looking to go up to another 20 to 30, you know.
And are you on, are you on shifts?
We're on shifts, yeah.
Two shifts or?
Two shifts, but trying to find second shift help is difficult. So the second shift is a skeleton crew, so a handful of people.
On second?
And the majority is on fresh shift.
So your peak hour, Paul, peak hour would be probably five, five to six? On a, can you, or Egress?
He said the peak hour.
Well, when's your, when's your first shift get out? 4:30.
4:30?
They don't all 30 at the same time.
Oh, they don't?
No, it's just, it's overtime, and, yeah. I would say that, you know, 4:30 is probably 20, 25 people that's max leaving, and after that, it's trickle down effect. I'm only 53, so.
Yeah, you know, I didn't really go through the peak hour numbers. That was so little that I.
But you were certainly, do you want to copy?
Yeah.
Dude, I got plenty. Anybody else want to take a look at a copy?
So I'm confused about the employees.
Yeah.
You have 68 covered employees. And if I understood Paul correctly, in the, I don't know how to say which, which addition. The addition closest to you, Paul? You said there were, right, there were 30 new employees going in there?
That was where we.
And 27 going in the other one? So we're talking about 125 employees total?
Total, two phase, two phase, one phase two and phase three, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So going back a little quickly. I love my last question, myself. Will all, will all three of those buildings be running on fresh shift? Or will, or will the other two buildings also be on shift?
They'll also be on shifts, yeah.
That make you press it, though?
It does.
Okay. So, street access, again, you know, we did do that. I wouldn't grade it, I just made sure that we weren't gonna act triggering DOT and/or reviewing a special wing for the drive. So that's reported, Ted, as now. As far as water quality, I know that this site, we're not storing any hazardous material outside. The only thing we're gonna have is propane tanks. Propane tanks typically don't be home to the containment for, how if we're gonna oil tank. Then we'd have to have containment, public containment just to make sure in case the oil tank fails, you know, to the ground. We just have propane tanks, obviously.
Where are your tank? Where are the tanks?
Propane tanks are gonna be right here.
Okay, so it's not in a per se drivable.
No.
Location, so it's a safety, safety for barrier or?
They are right, somewhere's right here, so we'll do.
Don't, like, you know what I'm saying is, it's not like in the parking lot so somebody could run into it, so.
So as far as water quality, that's the biggest concern here. We're gonna have propane tanks.
Paul, is that, is that a drive aisle around that building?
I'm sorry.
The grade area around the yellow building?
Oh, yeah, so it's gonna be reclaim asphalt. Which we're, obviously, pre.
Have some kind of hard sur, semi-hard surface, but not a, not a high traffic.
And because of that, we actually have to have a little, this is actually a little infiltration pond right here that I feel could mention, just to capture that a little bit. You know, we gotta capture, not even the primitive surface. So myself, I'd like to be able to get our own building for maintenance and.
It's, yeah, and for, and for emergency exits.
Yeah.
So the only really traffic is this non-regulable equipment, right?
The existing building doesn't have a travel?
It does. The light, right?
It looks like a pathway at the north side, or is that?
Over here, it doesn't have it here, it says a little, doesn't really have anything here. This is where, myself comes in right here.
Right. There's a, there's a little on the north side, like you're saying, it's, there's a little pathway that's like a walkway again to the emergency exit on that side. And it's also a little pathway, so the HVAC guys can serve it as a readily in the building.
Water supplies, obviously, we have a letter in the file. You saw Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunk Port and Wildlife, they're just gonna need to service the project with 8-inch water line that exists on Technology Drive. They did give us some numbers for pressure and all that stuff, so obviously, people designing the fire suppression system will need those numbers in order to design the fire suppression system.
This what drove them to build the water tank?
Say it again?
I don't think it helps, but.
It would help, it would help.
We just approved the water tank.
It would help if we had the water tank, right? Having degrees of friction, right?
Yeah, right.
Right across the street, and up on the hill.
Oh, really?
Yeah, right there on the edge of Rundle Cottage. That they had 65, that water tank, right? So water supply, obviously, you have a letter in the file, so we should be okay with that. Again, you know, we're in the BI zone. We're mainly using that zone. The maximum lot coverage is 70%. Lot coverage for lot 7-2, is that 23%? Lot coverage for lot 7-3 is 41.4%. Seems like it should be a lot more, but this is 7.81 F3. So well, the lot coverage allowance for the site, so. Talk to the thing. We gotta still work with DVAs and the undercoated engineers. They came back, and I had to kind of go to an exercise school of them. I don't think that it's going to be an issue as far as them approving it, but I just haven't, he hasn't got back and responded. See, that's the questions I responded, still waiting to get back to me. Again, it's a $55,721 price stack for those wetlands, and we agreed, myself agreed to do that. We got a letter from the main store preservation commission, and there's no, there's no national or registers in the property. It's not considered sensitive for archaeological locations. We don't have enough file for financial capacity just from, they're the savings bank, saying that myself has funds to rest maybe as far as $3 million. We do know we have to come down a cost breakdown, we will work on that. And there was certain venues who said that he has the finances in the project, and they, they can't wait to.
Hope it's done.
Exactly. They're looking really, looking forward to doing that. As far as, then we have a letter from the father and finding lens fishing and wildlife. They had no habitat concerns with fisheries. All they recommend is a hundred foot buffers normally, 75 foot buffer from streams, but any 10-year tough work with I and W, they seem to be able to pump it up to 100. We're not dealing with anything with a 100-foot extreme, so that doesn't really apply to us. However, that's just one thing that they were requiring is a hundred-foot natural buffer. And the other thing is basically bad, so, you know, the northern long-eared bat, you know, we don't really know where they are, so they'll just basically say wherever found. And again, the way we're basically deal with that is on all other projects, whenever they're doing tree trimming, June 1st, July 31st during the mating season, so. You know, so I, that's, again, US Department, US Department of Fish and Wildlife came back, and they have no critical habitats. Again, it was a northern long-eared bat that was threatened against wherever found, so we don't really know if they're there, but.
CYB.
Proposed cutting trees to June 1st and July 31st on the site. State domain came back, the Department of Agriculture, they said there's no botanical features or rare botanical feature within the project area. We're not in an urban, it'd be a stream watershed. Fighting, you know, we're not in a flood zone. And I think that was pretty much it for my presentation, unless you, certainly I want to answer any questions that you guys might have. Ideally, we want to try to get the jump preparation complete, so we move to the public hearing and all those good things. And we, once you get from here, probably we'd like it to be pretty close.
When do you expect that happen?
I don't know. It's a site location. Yeah, 120, yeah, 120 days.
180 days from, what, November, December?
I submitted it on.
You did 180 days?
No, I think it's more, right?
Is it? 20? 20 is what I am.
And this is a, this is not a revised site location? You've never had a site location permit for the size back here, right?
We submitted it, DEP on December 18th.
So you have it till, what, July?
No, six.
July, June?
Probably then to June.
We're hoping for, but they've been pretty slow to respond.
But that doesn't mean you still can't do any of the front work for your trees or the else, so you're, so that you're not in that time zone of your batch.
Yes, you know, ideally, it would be what DEP did for approval that, you know, where.
Go.
We get the recent adaptation to the guy.
So final, the idea, right?
Get final approval, so the DEP.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's a question. Okay, the question, well, is the new yellow building, not the new yellow building, site one, we'll call it, where we originally started, right? No, the yellow part, no.
The yellow part, is that?
No.
Lot 7-2?
The only yellow building you haven't pointed to, Paul.
There you go. How much are you expanding that one?
We're doing 120 by 200, 22,000.
Yeah, but what's there now?
Four.
Right now, it's four, so we're about.
No, no, because I remember when we've added on to the orange one.
Yeah, this was originally, was it 20 or 30?
30,000 was the original that we added.
I added another 10.
Okay, so that, this is a whole new building?
This is a whole new building.
That's, that's what I was trying to picture.
Nothing to do with the existing whatsoever.
How much bigger is that one than what you had originally proposed? You said, you said they did expand it up a little bit.
Yeah.
20,000, Paul, just, just shy of 20.
Yeah, okay.
We were, we were hoping for 25.
Obviously, wanted it even bigger, but.
We were hoping for 25, but 22, whatever, that calculated.
Now, the other yellow building, on lot one, I'm gonna call it, okay? What size is that one?
11,000?
11,200.
That you have as you plan for the future or the else? Is there area there to expand? That you have, as you plan for the future or the else, is there area there to expand? A building bigger or add to that with the way the, the water, the land and everything else is?
No, it's highly unlikely it is a wetland edge right here.
But I didn't know, cutting this way, I mean, I'm just looking where you're.
No.
That's about the best you can do on that lot.
On that piece, yeah, and if I need to go bigger, we still have lot, what I call lot two, which is.
So, so, that lot also.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one's pretty well maxed out.
Yeah, that's lot one, and that's lot three.
Yep.
That's why I was trying to.
Yep.
You, you said you were gonna phase this, so, which would come first?
Well, we, Paul and I had discussed that the, the best for, for the business, um, is I gotta construct the, the road off Technology Drive and the parking first. Before, 'cause I have existing parking where that yellow building is, just, so I have to, so I have to, I gotta hit that, you know, the employees.
We shuffle.
Phase one will be the road and the parking, phase two will be the excavators move down to the building and start excavating for the building. And then phase three, the excavators move and prep that out of the lot for the other buildings.
So I think phase one, if I can potentially correct myself, we're gonna build this, this tight entrance to here and then end this parking.
Yes, yeah.
You have to do that for the, uh, some parts, correct?
Correct.
The loading dock.
Yep. Then, uh.
And then phase two will be artist of the building.
Yeah.
Phase three will be the constructive.
Yeah. And then phase four, they'll move back and do the landscape and whatever they need to do after the building.
Where's your loading dock?
Right here.
Okay.
The loading dock on the other one, loading dock right here.
Yeah, oh, right in the.
It was here, we're actually removing the existing loading dock, we'll put it in here.
Are you only gonna need one, Marcel?
Yeah. Would that be, um, sort of, you know, the, the finish, would that be elevated or an aggregate dock?
No, this is. This, this, the loading dock goes down here.
Right, so it'll be, you'll be able to back, but.
Yes.
Truck right in, be able to roll the fork truck in or whatever you wanna go in and out or. Which, which is what we have now, but that's what's gonna get filled in with the building.
Yeah, two retaining walls and a little catch base, and obviously the catch.
And we'd like, at least on, on my property, um, we'd like that a one-way traffic flow, basically, we'll put signage for the employees, so we'll be coming in off. The technology drive, and we'll be exiting by the, by the cul-de-sac.
So you're gonna make this all one-way?
Yeah.
Trucks and cars.
We think the traffic flow would be better that way.
I'm about for sure the traffic flow is.
And safer, yeah.
Yep, so I'll show that.
Yeah.
Now, how far off on lot one? Okay, how far off is the building from Route one?
Um.
Roughly.
Well, the setback on Route one is fifty feet, so we're probably talking, this is one inch, it's forty, uh, fifty-five feet roughly is the building. Um, I did provide some numbers.
Because there's a lot of trees in there, you're, you're probably leaving a lot of them, aren't you?
No, I, you know, we're gonna have to do the septic right here.
Yeah.
This light green area is pretty much where we're gonna probably have to clear. So, you know, we're gonna definitely maintain any trees that we can within, uh, that area. Um, I know, because of the septic system location, the light green area is pretty much what, again, of our slope grading. But we were talking about, about probably fifty-five feet, uh, I mean sixty-five feet off Route one, I think the parking. For some reason, I didn't calculate those, I don't know.
Building looks like it's seventy-five feet back.
Fifty.
From the parking.
All right, so these fifties are setback lines, so another.
Right, so you can get that covered.
Um, as far as the parking, I don't know. Or I can't find those numbers. Okay, so, all right, so parking, um. Oh, the parking, Route one. All right, this, oh, the pot, and this pot and spa right here is thirty-seven feet from Route one. And probably the way you imagine, when you just turn around, that's thirty-two feet. Obviously, we gotta maintain the twenty-five foot buffer for what I understand, so the ordinance. Uh, anyone necessarily push that envelope, so, um, we're at thirty-seven feet from, uh, property line. And try to maintain as much vegetation as we possibly can in that area. Um, you know, I don't think we would be super opposed, if we really, if we really, really wanted something, we could probably plant some, some of the little greenery here, some kind of conifers. Some conifers or instead of edible greens. But I think that's, I don't know, my opinion, I don't know if the site needs anything more than that, but I guess I'll, uh, see what the board has to say about landscaping. Myself has basically just crushed stone in front of the building, looks nice, not shrug, but we're talking, we're in industrial zone, it's not like. You know, it's not visible from any, any Route one properties, it's not even visible much from Technology Drive. We're pretty much, ours is gonna pretty much follow the same type of scenario here, and make this just a crushed stone. That was my thoughts, I think that's what myself would like to see. Uh, again, it's not gonna be super visible from Route one, if you look at myself's building, it looks pretty clean.
Well, right there.
We just have landscaping standards, you know, to, on technol- at Technology Drive and, and the buffer along the lines, which.
Okay, yeah, so, so the rest.
If you want to discuss that, I'd like to go out to the door and see how much can be, so if you wanna meet out there some more.
Yeah, I would.
Sure, we should do a sidewalk back there anyway. Another question, oh, I'm sorry, Paul, on that, um, the, the buffer, what, what is, what's the, uh, the width of that buffer that the?
Well.
Size.
Size. Yeah.
And is that?
Yeah, that's, I think from the property line that might be, the property line has.
Let's. Fifty feet or so off buffer one?
For a range building.
I think so, yeah. Front yard strip is fifteen foot wide landscape strip established in the front yard of the property between the building and the public street. This is a vegetated ground cover, shrub, plant material, and those tree trees. Tree trees installed in the, in the front yard of any property, finding a public street or private way, so that would be along Technology for that, that would be along, um, Route one. Parking lot land save strip, twenty-five foot landscape strips established around all parking lots, provide screening between adjacent land use and offering for adjacent residential dwellings. Playboard may wave, report your foot landscape area on the side of the real lot line, a part of the non-residential use, and those coordinates, parking access and landscape. Which is what, which is gonna go into what I was gonna ask about. What about another question?
It sounds as if he's meeting the twenty-five foot parking lot buffer. Cause he said he was thirty-seven feet out of the parking lot.
But he's also, also clear.
So. But, well, at least the park, he doesn't have to worry about being too, too close to the property level, now he just has to worry about what he's gonna do to buffer it.
I think we should look at that.
I, we need the sidewalk to be there.
That'd be awesome, I don't think myself has a problem with planting some trees along that parking area.
Since there's already trees in it, I can just believe it would be the easiest.
Well, we're gonna do what we can, you know, it's, uh.
We have to probably.
It was already cleared for the right of way.
Yeah, so let's take a look. Um, question, the, the one question I had, um, Marcel, you had, you had mentioned back one year ago, that, um, you wanted to keep lot seven two as a separate lots, is that, that appears to be still the case, right?
It's two separate Ds.
Right.
But you're, you're not gonna combine them, you need a separate building.
So.
So, there's gonna be shared parking and shared access between seven two and seven three, right?
Well, I don't know if it's gonna be shared parking, but I guess it could be.
Might be, you know, you don't know, I mean.
That's right, 'cause chances are this parking is gonna be for.
Pretty much of a. But access is good.
Access, definitely.
So I think you also might wanna take a look at, at some sort of easement between lot two and three, even though you own it. Stating that the perpetual, that lot three, or lot seven three, you know, has perpetual use of that market, of that driveway to act for access purpose, and if there's shared parking, to put that in there to just as protection.
Well, I'm not so sure, if we in the future wanna separate these lots, and we don't really need the interconnectivity of it, we could actually just remove that pavement and make them separate lots of record and not make them connectable. So, I don't know why we would need it, this time, if he owns them all, obviously, they went to sell these, these properties, that has to be ironed out.
Only, only reason why it's this, to make.
Myself isn't gonna do that, but.
We have a one-way traffic.
That's right.
Well, yeah, but the sites are both set up so that a truck can chill, truck can come in, back up, leave. This site's set up so a truck can chill, truck can come in, back up, and go in, go out, and leave. They are both able to do that.
Well, I don't think you'd be, you'd be stuck with, when you sell it, you can always, you own both trucks, you can always come up with.
Yeah, I don't think you gotta do that much.
Agreements later.
Ted, is there, is there a criteria in the BI?
I think.
The criteria, yeah, the, the criteria only if you have shared parking, but I'm just thinking of, I'm thinking of Union Square over in Portland, if you've ever been there. Where you had two property owners with a shared, and, um, um, because they didn't have the easement, they only had an agreement. Uh, set fences with them, chain link fences with them right across the parking lot and the driveways and stuff, and, uh, that was great liberty and, uh, first of planning, and it caused havoc. And it was just, oh, if you, if you were planning to keep them separate, maybe you could potentially sell them separately later. We don't have that easement, and then make sure that, that lots three isn't, uh, cut off at some future date by, by the property owner, wants to get a dispute.
Lot three is over on the other side.
Yeah, between the two lots.
Yeah. I have no problems providing easement, I think it's just gonna be an access easement, I don't know if I'll provide parking, I think I'll just provide.
An access easement.
Just these two properties, um, and then keep the parking separated between the two buildings. Unless myself really wants to add the parking, we don't, but if an easement really is something that you hang up on. It's easy to do, but I just didn't think it's really, really necessary at this time.
Only because they're separate lots, you keep them separate lots, it's not a reason.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
But the line is no problem.
Yeah, okay.
And the other question I had is, what is going in, in the second building, lot two?
That's.
Got a couple, uh, ideas at this point.
Okay.
And, uh, one of them being, uh, bring in, uh, a company that can do N E T testing, so non-destructive testing, that they do on our parts. So, I'd like to bring something in there that complements my business, as far as, uh, whether I bring in E T in-house myself, usually that has to be separated from the in-depth facility. So that's why, that would be there, or maybe even N E T, so.
So that would be associated, that would be your product, your, your business would want to be associated with this.
It could be associated, or it could, we could only buy something and we will be there.
Yeah, definitely could be in a part of his business plan.
Yeah. Right now, both of those, we truck every day to Massachusetts, and it's very expensive, so, um, that's the thought process right now. And being eleven thousand square feet, you could probably even do both in, in there.
Get both of, both of those.
Yeah.
You don't do any coating, look at that, Frax Air?
Yeah, uh, Frax Air does some of our coatings, and we use, uh, you know, suddenly finishing up the core, well, too, and then we use aerodynamics down in, uh, Seaport, Hampshire, there's a lot of.
Yep. You, you had mentioned, uh, you talked about the, the lighting plan, that, um, I don't know, I couldn't find it in his pack.
No, I said that, uh.
You don't know.
It's right here.
Okay, I don't.
I guess what they said by itself, like you said, trying by dangers.
Paul had, had asked about it before the end, and I had said, you know, if we wait and go and find submission, then we won't have to worry.
I mean, I had, I was sitting in the office, but. If anybody wants to look at it, I, I have.
Yeah, they have copies.
You want a copy today?
Yeah, I got a flash for you.
Jim, the only, the only place where I'd be looking at is along Route one, that's all, other than that, it's all your property itself.
His lighting, acting as.
Right there, they've got.
So I have plenty, but you don't want to know, right?
Well, you know, we might.
I have nine sets.
Give you the whole set before you.
What I understand.
Also, all of them.
Our president discerned. And they'll have it.
They shield, they have it full shield.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so basically, we're just trying to.
Yeah.
You can see these, uh, his thing, it's red and black numbers.
Yeah.
This is all zero here.
Quick.
This is zero. So, I mean, reading, I think, if you're on the fifth, fifth of the larger pages, you should read the numbers, I hope it's a tennis scale, like the parking. So it's all zero, and what he gave me for the thing that shows up in red and black, I'm, I'm sorry, all in black.
Question.
So I think the focus where, I believe, I haven't really gone through this, the dock outlines here, where I think it meets the, the brightest.
Yeah.
Then beyond that, it meets any investigations.
That is purity or, or, uh, walk.
Does that have the elevation?
Not necessarily.
Is it, I'm just asking, it's one of the things I was asking for a waiver.
Do you, building elevator or?
Uh, it just, waivers are requested at the, for the outdoor lighting, drawing some more relevant building elevations, etc., and I didn't know.
And he hasn't supplied me that the board wants that, is the elevations, the lighting illumination up against the building.
The color, the reflection.
We're not really, not even needing lights here in this building, 'cause this, this pole light will take care of all this area right here, probably just have some chivalry, or the entry light, but. Um, as far as myself, building, it's already got existing lights on it, um, that was approved in the past, I'm hoping I don't have to go back in and try to analyze those lights, I did show them on that plan. Tells you where they are and what they're mounted at. So, I'm hoping we don't have to go do the exercise for that, 'cause it's a little bit difficult, if you have to get them all being, to actually look at the lens and try to find that lens and try to figure out. It's existing, it's, no one's ever complained, I don't think, as far as being too much light, and so I showed where they are. Um, so, I don't anticipate we're gonna need any other, uh, lights, you know, but I will talk to Jim and myself, he wants another light in the building, he will show that and spec out what that is in the future submission, but. Right now, he was just trying to concentrate what he thought the minimum lighting was, the pocket area. That what he needed for pocket area.
I got a copy.
So I say the waiver is kinda like they want the, the vertical building elevations and.
What's that? I'm not, I'm not interested in it. That way he can lose them, not me.
Paul, do you have, I mean, is there any design for the other building? Or lot two?
For light?
No, for the, the elevations.
This one? No. Building elevations, you mean? We, we are gonna supply those, I'm just asking this, for the light analysis out on the vertical face of the buildings. I was asking for that waiver, which, I don't think we're gonna have any lights, and this light, these pole lights basically is zero, where they're minimal impact right here. I don't think we're gonna need to have it that, and these are existing, so, I know the ordinance says you need to show the vertical lights and the vertical illumination, vertical, you know, face in the buildings. I think, I think, I think I've almost seen that once, but if that's something that the ones that I want, I need to know that, so I can put lighting guy on it.
I don't know, guys, what is your, your pleasure, we're being asked for outdoor lighting, landscape, and security plans.
No, not really. That one's a big, see, you have lighting?
Yeah.
You'll light it.
Can I ask a quick question? This means the site might, we don't give a, 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 a. So, I mean, ultimately, we're. I would, I would say, you know, as they get into it to submit their architectural plan, as you get going, you know, that'd be just part of the final briefing. That's my take on, on that one at least.
Well, I think, I think that's pretty much something that I was thinking about on, on all of.
Yes. Right.
If, when it comes time for site, the final submission, if we don't have these, then we're not gonna, our options is either send, send you away on an extension or deny. Either one of which is, we're just talking about the, the waivers.
Yes.
When you come in on the, with the final submission, you don't have all of that stuff at that point. We have two options. Actually, we have one option, which would be to deny, but you can always request an extension to get.
Yeah, you're talking about the thirty days again.
Right, I guess so, thirty days, whatever.
Yeah, there's two of them, we're, we're looking at, at trying to modify that, so it's a, it's a couple of meetings.
Thirty days, and I go shop, and want to have a complete application, or, and then a public hearing, and I have to change the entire thing. I only have, really only have two weeks, because I gotta resume in two weeks, so I can go back to next agenda. I don't even have thirty days, right?
Well, that's.
I literally just turned in two weeks to get on.
Then to get on somebody else's agenda.
We were, we were looking at the possibility of modifying that up to three meetings, so that you would have, uh, a, a long enough period of time to be able to make the adjustments, because you're right. If, if you've got two weeks to get back on the agenda, that's not a great deal of time. There's a certain irony to this, because the thirty days was supposed to play in.
Yeah, I know, I don't, I understand that, to me, it should be a six month, or one with six month extension, and hopefully, if I, if we're done, you guys can proceed quicker and approve.
I, I think the current board is, is with you on that in the mindset, but like Ted said, I think the presumption was maybe other boards or the past precedent was to keep, keep that. To have the standard to keep the board from arbitrarily delaying stuff.
Prevent that from occurring.
But like I said, too, it's depending on if you can get on somebody else's agenda. Depends on what time of year it is to actually to get somebody. You have to fill it in, to fill in your needs.
But when it, when it comes to things like that for the, for the D E P application, we normally say, prove to us that you submitted it.
Right.
You've submitted it, okay, we can proceed forward without actually having it, because you're not gonna be able to do the project if D E P says no. Even if we say yes and D E P says for whatever reason, not, we're rejecting it, your project's dead in the water.
Right.
So if, if you've got proof that you've submitted it, and you give it to us, then that, that's sufficient for us, because we normally ask for the, for the submission or a letter from the D E P. But if, if you've submitted it, we can move forward.
Oh, yeah.
He submitted.
He was with.
As far as the lighting goes, I think we, we have to decide what to do, we have, the requirement is to show all, all the building elevations, where pictures are located and the illumination level, all that. Think if, what, what I'd like to see, I think I'd be all right with, is just showing the location of where those lights would be on the building.
I have that on that one.
Yeah, but not on the, the proposed one.
Right.
If we are gonna put mounting lights on these buildings, we should.
As long as they're shielded.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, I don't think you've got any, you know, wouldn't be facing the, the road around or anything.
Nope.
Well, the, because the, the reason why we have that, we don't want it, it to, uh, blind traffic, it's driving past your building. Also, disturb a neighbor next door. We're not gonna disturb yourself anymore to.
Yeah, no, that's, we're gonna, no lights here, no lights out back.
So, just the location of.
Absolutely.
I don't know about rest of.
Yeah, but, yeah, no, the bulk of the, the.
Yeah, I would expect out the type, expect out the height and the location of it.
Yeah. Yeah, most of it will come from a pole mount and light and stuff. And the, um.
The loading docks are a little dark.
Yeah, no, I think we're gonna have a light here, we're gonna have a light here, for sure.
Yeah, you're only, you're only gonna have a light.
No, we're not a light there.
Nine pence of foot handle, I think that's a little, little dark.
I'm trying to.
I know, I.
The runway, but it's not, it's not. No lights in the runway.
No, it's.
Go over there.
I, I do believe, I do believe we're gonna have a light here.
So, that loading dock is just going to be leveled, and they're gonna back straight up, it's not gonna be going down yet.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it's, okay.
This one has to be retaining walls, because of just the height of the buildings. This one I've just graded off, so I can actually grade this down, and it's gonna grade off into my barn.
Okay.
So I won't need a retaining wall. Because this building here is in itself is a retaining wall, and this location is open.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, that, that will actually be drive, we'll back up, it'll be a level loading dock.
So, are we gonna, are we gonna do formal waivers for, for all of those, or? Well, I thought Jamie's point was that we don't necessarily have to.
Well, that was, that was for the, the, the building plan.
The building plan, okay.
You know, yeah, I think ultimately, we've agreed here that the illumination plan, if he adds a couple of small lights to the building.
Yeah.
As long as it's shown on the elevation, we get the cut sheets, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
That, I, I think we're all comfortable that the illuminate, that, that, yeah, the illumination plan wouldn't have to be updated. With foot handles and everything.
Yeah, for that, yeah. We're not really, we don't really care about the foot, the way of the building, we just care about the elevation, elevation, that's what it is.
Yeah, and so, yes, I lost, I had my finger for waivers here.
Somebody is, you had, you had.
On right here.
Five of them.
So, we don't give G D, ground work study, we have that. We are just by detailed process method, prior estimation, hopefully. But I guess Ted isn't even included yet, for detailed process at this stage, right? We have an estimate of three million dollars, you know, T C O estimate, so Ted can decide on what we're gonna do for maintenance guarantees. Building plans, obviously, I think now, as we move forward here, myself and Todd, the building contractor, when we come back, we should have some elevation views of the buildings. I know I asked floor plans also, so I guess we could probably, I mean.
Well, yeah, um, do you have an architect book? I assume you have an architect.
Pat Coe Construction Design, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have they sent it up to Fire Marshall yet?
They have, uh.
So, we'll get work on at least a planner, the elevation views, they know what they look like. And on those elevation views, we can show the lights usually, um, by those, the location of them.
They're not, really not asking for any waivers at the final stage.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Yeah, just looks like, just preliminary stuff, and you just wanna wait until the final submission before you provide. Or at least that's, that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, exactly, just trying to make the outage, so get the outage to leave.
Move along.
And obviously, we will supply additional information, now we already gave you some lighting, um, you know, that cost estimate is three million, we did the ground water studies, so.
There's a landscape.
Starting our landscaping, although I did say, you know, we're gonna maintain the existing vegetation, we'll be careful, we're gonna look on that, obviously. Hopefully Ted can help us, that would be great.
But we won't, we won't be able to determine it complete until after we've done the sidewalk anyway.
Oh.
We gotta go out and take a look, because we have changes that we want you to make.
Yeah, we're gonna kinda make this. Different photo, sorry. I don't want the time to be.
Yeah, because once, once, the, the issue be, once we determine it's complete, you're gonna have a public hearing within thirty days.
I know.
And, and I, I don't think we're at that point with what we have right here, I think we're very close, and once we do the side, sidewalk, we probably will be able to go forward.
Okay, okay. Just wanna make sure, I want to get it right back to speed, I wanna make sure we move this thing forward, so this is not gonna be.
Or braces, pine frame.
So what's a, what's a good time to do a public hearing, guys?
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, sidewalk.
We have a meeting next week, if, if you guys wanna move faster, rather than.
Well, I just, I'm trying to get to the public hearing, because who knows? These public hearings, you know, after you've spent thirty thousand dollars, the client's money, you know, how they turn out?
Oh, I thought you'd shut up the D E P one.
It's like, you know, just like B and B, you know, after you've spent all this money, she shows up and she complains about the whole project, now we decided to give it to her. I like the public hearing sooner than later, because gives me a chance to modify the plan before I spend all the engineering.
So, the process would be sidewalk.
Is what it is.
Come back, discuss, and to review completeness, right? And if that is complete, we can then schedule a public hearing.
We can then schedule, yeah. And really not expecting too many big issues getting in the way. Might be, maybe, uh, some of the, the landscape issues.
Yeah.
But other than that, I don't think, uh, there'd be too many people showing up at the public hearing.
Oh, no, I, well.
As far as ready building, it's gonna cost more than the landscape, few trees.
Yeah, I mean, and few trees, we're not, we're not worried about it, whatever. In, in looking down your items that you've checked off as applicant request to be waived, whether it's a, a bona fide waiver, or whether it's something you're just looking to waive? The submission right now, right? You know, you've got, the landscaping plan will, you know, will likely need to address it somehow or another. Uh, building plans, you'll have to get that in at some point, cost estimate, same thing, groundwork study you're working on.
Very good, that one.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, we just got that.
Um, I mean, I don't see any issues. The one does not apply that you have for association covenants, maybe if you, if, you know, you work with Ted and you do that easement.
Yep.
You know, you do that, but, um, and signs, you're not doing signs?
Okay, a question, while you're talking about that easement, just a thought. If he has that between two different lots, does the easement have to show anything for, um, maintenance? I'm just asking a question, I mean, eas- easement for using the road, but two different, with two different properties. Okay, if it's under one, one owner will take care of the, let's say, for example, a plow or whatever else. That's why I'm using the, the question.
Well, I think that could be as basic or as complicated as he would wanna make it.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out as.
As, as.
Proposals and comments.
Not put up a fence and, and, you know, prevent access from one lot to another right through there.
I'm just adding, throwing it out as pros and comments.
Thoughts?
Well, I think if he does sell one of the lots, and they're gonna be easement, then certainly that could be some maintenance requirements, and he would sell that, it would be, go over and share the maintenance of the, the main access and.
Well, no, I'm just, I, I'm not trying to make a ruffle, you know?
But I think that would be, when he was a self, like, I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Be responsible to maintain the whole thing, or we're sharing equally and maintaining it.
Yep.
Or you know, if you're sharing it, you know, you don't need somebody from lot one to plow down to the property line, leave all the snow there, and, and then lot two, plow it through the rest of the way.
I think, I think, I think you're right, but at this point, because you own the entire property, it's not gonna be a problem. But what does happen in the future?
First of all, it's not changing.
Yeah, I think in the future, if you were to sell something, that's definitely the way you want it. So they just wanna access easements, to, to, to clarify the rights of who to maintain it.
Right, I don't think anything get into that.
I think at the point that if you sell it, and there are two separate companies, you're gonna have to have an association agreement anyway, which will spell out all the.
Maintenance.
Yep. We'll have to record it, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out as a.
What, what did you say your timeframe was with Pat Coe to get the building elevations?
Well, they're ready to, I have preliminarys on it now.
Yep.
Matter of fact, I have one that, when it was twenty-five thousand square feet, they have it all designed now, but I didn't bring it, because it's not twenty-five thousand square feet, because I had to be shrunk up a little bit. So they're just waiting for my, I'm waiting for tonight before our lease is signed, to see if there was any changes. And then I'm just gonna give Greg a call tomorrow and say, let's build this at twenty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so they, so they're gonna be readily available at the next meeting council?
Yep. Yeah.
That would hold us up from looking to move forward with sidewalks.
So the sidewalk, how about before next meeting?
We got a lot of rain coming in.
Instead of it be, what, do it, do it at six o'clock? Because the meeting sits down.
Yeah.
So that'll be, uh, a week from tonight.
Yeah.
You got a lot of rain coming in.
Is that enough time to, to be advertised? But, I'm sorry, a week from today, if we do the sidewalk, is that a problem? Okay. I'll need three dollars.
How wet is it also?
I wasn't sure how much it is, because I.
Lot one's gonna make difference. Would, how wet is lot one?
You're talking about one?
Yes.
There's actually a nice little road, an old road that was put in here a couple years ago, that we can walk right down.
Okay, why I'm just saying, the way the weather is being predicted right now.
No, I think you.
Walk right down that road soon.
You see what I'm.
Absolutely.
I mean, uh.
But Paul, Paul said at one point, that road is, is a full gravel road, so it's, it's not by.
You ain't gonna be worried at all.
Well, no, no, I mean, I know lot three, where the new building is, it's nothing.
There's snowbanks in there right now, but.
Yes.
But it's, yeah.
I think it's, it's.
We got warm weather and snow melt, that'll, you're getting.
It will be swampy, it's our.
No, but like I said, right now, this is where, lot three, okay, where the new building is, you got all snowbanks in there, so you can't see much.
So, Marty, would you be able to make it next Thursday, six o'clock?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. So they'll be, they'll be, because there's only gonna be four of us, there'll be you, myself, Tom, and Roger.
Yeah, yeah.
Jens and Susan are out of town.
Wait, are they back?
Jens will be back, thanks. He will be back. Oh, Jens will be back, so we're back.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, Susan, we know where she's.
Yep.
I'm gonna be out of town.
Yeah.
I was thinking, I was thinking Susan, myself, and Jens would all be away, so we wanted to make sure, Roger's not here, but we wanted to make sure at least the three of you guys were.
Well, like I said, the other thing is, on lot three right now, Paul was just saying, and Marcel was just saying, that the fact is that, right now, there's just majorly snowbanks there. Okay, but the fact is, if, with the weather coming, we got a lot of rain, and we got some warmer weather, so it'll melt out, but right now, you can't see much of the snowbanks.
So the snowbanks are.
I'm just throwing it out, but.
Yeah, so right now, this is pavement, over here, this is parking, right now, so you, obviously, that's clear, so the snowbanks are sitting, um, over right here. Could walk behind the snowbank, but there are some big snowbanks right here.
Oh, of course. What about that one, lot one, or lot two, whatever that lot is?
Like Paul was saying, there is an old toll road or something.
Nice, nice little, uh, old toll road that kinda comes right here.
Yeah.
Nice iron draw.
We'll be able to get a, a, a look, yeah.
I think you can see quite clearly, you have it, you have it staked out.
Okay.
You know, that one, this one, obviously, stakeout, it's pretty easy.
Can you stake out the parking lot on that? You got one by, it's off, off.
Your one?
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Lot one.
Yeah, just add, just add that, so that we can see where it is.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense, we can see the shrubbery and trees, yeah.
Yep, okay, so we need, we need a motion for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Motion's been made for six P M on the twenty-first?
Second.
It's been made the second, is there any discussion about it? All those in favor?
Aye.
You think animus, with one abstention. Since lock, huh?
One abstention, who's extending?
Jamie won't be there.
He's still, hopefully.
I still, I don't feel right obligating you guys to a sidewalk, I know I'm not gonna be there.
Okay.
Well, you're on the planet, boy, what do you mean?
We look, we look forward to seeing you then.
Yes, I do, yeah.
And then, uh, we'll, we'll give you some feedback after, after sidewalk.
So Ted, did you say I can give you the copies?
Yeah, I'll give you the copies now.
I'm gonna carry this back home.
Why not? I don't wanna carry it home.
Man, oh, yeah. You will use it, is the, uh, the strapping, yeah, and then you have the.
That's Jim's.
Jim's?
Okay. Moving right along. You're still with us, Chris?
Huh, I'm still with you.
Moving, moving right along, Ted, we have some copies of that stuff. We have item two, B and B trucking, the plant recycling review. Because of, because of changes in the plans, well, this, this one will not affect, well, we just need to, to prove that it is, it is null and void, because the timeframe has elapsed. They're going to be coming to us with a different proposal, and, and Paul has already conveyed that to us, so we, we, we just need to deal with the first. Application that we were looking at, just, just say that it's, time, time, time period expired, it's, you have to resubmit if you want anything done. But I, I think we should make it official and put it in the minutes.
What, what move, apparently, be when that clock, they have to defer.
Start the new process, new process.
Another thirty days and then.
And they're, while they're aware that, that, that we're doing this, that.
I called the B and B, I mean, approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, Frank, you know, the shock was, and the, well, they didn't like the way we were doing it, and so we talked about it, so now we're gonna have two entrances, you're not gonna have to drive, you're gonna have to drive through the operation, we just have one doors, the backside, so we're not gonna have doors where our house is.
Just the neighbor on New Road or Albert Road?
So he decided to really scale back on it, but I said, you're in a hurry, 'cause you couldn't get it done this year, you already have a place that you're renting. So we've got some point in the hurry, but we're not.
So you've been working with the neighbor and you have a new plan that he'll be bringing back for us?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but I'm Abigail Worthing, I spoke at the meeting, and we have not heard from them, so hasn't been working with us. In the last five months, not a word.
You said you talked to your mom.
Nope, he talked to her in the morning and said that he was sorry, but has not said anything to her about the plans.
He told me that he did talk to her, but we are revising the plan to take your considerations, your comments, your considerations.
Okay, we'll look forward to hearing from you.
We need a, need a motion to consider the original application.
All of the way.
So move.
The second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made the seconded, any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor? All right, give it to you, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the list, ordinance provisions. A review of proposed changes to the street design construction ordinance proposed by the Ad hoc Street Design Committee of progress report on the R one building.
Do you wanna carry that? Thank you.
Considering down to the project.
Okay.
So, she doesn't like that one, we'll just have to.
As you know, we have a, a meeting Thursday night. Public hearing for the, uh, street design. Street designing construction ordinance that is being proposed.
So that's, that's on the agenda?
It is number, item number one on the public hearing agenda.
Yeah, but it's, it's on tonight's agenda.
For discussion, if you guys wanna discuss what's going on and the, and the various changes. The ordinance was passed out last week.
Yeah.
You know what the various changes are. I don't know if you have any discussion or comment?
Well, there's, um, there's not much, we have, we don't have much say in the matter, we don't.
Well, our, our, the entire amount to say that we will have, we hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
Then we discuss it amongst ourselves, whether we re, we recommend it to the board of selectmen for adoption or rejection.
Or no.
You know, we can, we can say that we disagree and we don't think it should go through, that it's still going, there's still going to be a special town meeting that addresses the issue.
And it still will be on the warrant.
Yeah.
No matter what we say, yay or nay.
That, that's correct, it doesn't matter if we say yes or no, it's going to be on a special town meeting warrant. Have they decided when their town meeting is?
Yeah.
No. That, if, from what I understand, talking to Keith, next Thursday, after we close the public hearing, the board of selectmen is gonna take, after we close our discussion, the board of selectmen's gonna take three minutes, and they're gonna sign the warrant.
Yeah, it's supposed to be equal first.
And then, and, and at that point, they will set whatever date is, it's going to be for the, the, uh, special town meeting. But we have to, we have to hold a public hearing, and then we have to make a recommendation on all of the, the different items that are in there. Now, when I look at it, there's only two items in there that, there's, there's more, but there's the street design, and then the next three items on the warrant, all change, all reference changes made to the land use ordinance because of the adoption of the street design. If the street design fails, the next three items would even be up for, for discussion, because they would be making a change that does not exist.
Okay, but then other items, other one, uh, warrant items would be possibly, okay, the fire?
No.
And what about, what about, uh, uh, street vendor?
The street vendor is the fifth, there are, there are five items on there, four of them relate to this, to the street design and one to the food trucks.
Mr. Chairman, four of them don't, there's only the first two. Because we also have several other things that were changed that are actually been initially.
Oh, I.
Now, one was museum.
Once museum.
It's the only, the second one.
Yeah.
It's memory serves.
Right. Museum, what it is, Article one is basically the amendments, repeal and replace of, uh, original street design and construction ordinance. Article two are changes to the land use ordinance that basically, that, that have to be made. Assuming that are, in the event that Article one passes, then we have to take items about private ways out of the land use ordinance and driveway design references that go back to the street, uh, design, or go back to actually section five thirteen of the land use ordinance, that now we're gonna be referenced over the street design construction standards. Those are in the equestrian. And then Article three is basically museums in the, the business in, uh, the I district. And then also changes to the parking section, uh, section five twelve, which is obviously off-street parking, regarding the number of parking spaces for museums. Then Article four are the amendments to the definition of front lot line, remember that?
Okay.
Regarding, that was regarding a, a lot line that's bounding a private way, uh, that the, that the owner does not have rights to. Uh, that's considered a side lot line and not a front lot line. And then Article five, uh, six, Article six is amendments regarding, uh, excuse me, Article five is the amendments regarding. So contractor yards, we're gonna save till, uh, till June when we have a wider audience.
So in order to focus on the, the changes to the street design?
Yeah.
I think. What is the, what's the clip notes version of the changes?
I did the clip notes for it in that memo.
So what is, what are the major items out of here?
You want the clip notes to the clip notes?
Yes. I want the summary, not the six-page summary, but the executive summary. I'm not gonna be an executive, I need a bigger chair.
You need an executive.
Yeah, much bigger chair.
Uh, the executive summary is, the, uh, the proposed street design and construction ordinance contains two si, two basic sections that are, that are significant changes. One is, the first section is really dealing with, um, standards for subdivision roads. And the second one is really, uh, section two focuses primarily on private ways. And private ways, uh, standards have been significantly reduced from what they are in five thirteen, the land use ordinance. And also the, uh, so those standards have been reduced, the process of, and actually, the standard is unified, it's one standard. It's a sixteen-foot road with one-foot shoulders. Fifteen feet inches of gravel, three inches, fifteen inches of type D gravel, three inches of type A gravel. And, uh, there's, there are standards in there that allow an expansion or extension of a private way, um, to occur within any right of way, as long as it can fit. Uh, there are provisions in there that allow it to, a new extension to come off of an existing, uh, private way that, uh, may, uh, may not meet that sixteen-foot standard, but if it can be proven, demonstrated that that existing private way, actually, that's a private way that existed prior to two thousand and ten. Uh, that, that road does not have to be brought up to the same standard as long as we demonstrate that the safety can be negotiated, and the amount of traffic that needs to be put on is not gonna make it an unreasonable, uh, uh, problem in terms of traffic or, uh, impact to that road. Let's see, we also have a distinction between two types of private ways, we have exempt and a non-exempt. Exempt refer to exempt lots, lots that are exempt from subdivision review, as we know, under, uh, forty-four oh one to D one through four, and those are basically failing divisions and splits and probing. And those are, those are going to be, um, reviewed by the staff review committee and not by the planning officers. Whereas private ways that do not relate to a subdivision will be reviewed by the staff review committee, and private ways that are subdivisions under subdivision ordinance will be reviewed by the planning. There's lots more clip notes. Um, sidewalks are taken out, curving, and two of these curbs are, are, uh, rammed in as well, they have two types of curbs.
Prohibited?
Yeah. We will no longer have two of those. Uh, for a subdivision road, two of those curbs will not be allowed on the slip, uh, slip form concrete, curving, and, uh, granite, either type one or type five. The standards that were changed for the, uh, I'm going all over the place, because I'm trying to give you the executive summary. Standards, standards changed in the subdivision roads are, um, not significantly different from where they are now. The one they measured, the ones that were changed with commercial roads, commercial industrial roads, those that used to be thirty, they're down to twenty-four. There are paved shoulders on arterial and commercial roads, collectors and minor streets will have only gravel shoulders, but the paved shoulders are to facilitate transportation and light traffic and also ensure that the road is protected. And we also have a reasonable amount of pavement, we have quarter-inch paving requirements, which is pretty hard to do here. So they're all half-inch of the margins rather than quarter-inch of the margins. So the, the real thing, the real difference here, there are some other, other things, uh, I mean, you can get into a lot of weeds here if you want to. There's some changes, not huge changes in the subdivision, uh, but large changes in private ways. And private ways, uh, for subdivision, uh, can be a dirt road, sixteen-foot, uh, but they, uh, they cannot be more than ten, ten units or ten lots beyond that private.
Okay, one question along that whole idea of private way, if I may add.
Yes.
Okay, where does it say there is or isn't the idea of a road maintenance agreement?
There is a road maintenance agreement for private ways, it's in the standards.
Okay, but what my question is, where you said a private way can have a new extension put to it?
Yep.
Okay? What, if somebody doesn't want to join the road maintenance agreement on the extension? Because the other ones are already taken care of, of what is existing, that's my question.
Well, the road maintenance agreement that I would recommend at the staff level, I would recommend at the planning level, would be the road maintenance agreement that's a standardized form on which you don't have to sign, it's basically, it's an easement encumbrance that's attached to the lots. Lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four, lot five shall, whatever the number is, shall have an equal portion required in the, uh, the maintenance. So whoever buys, and that's attached to the deed, that would be the requirement, that's attached to the deed, so whoever buys that is now legally bound by that, that road maintenance agreement. Now, will the town enforce that? No, they will, they will have the right to enforce that road maintenance, but that will be attached to the deed. We won't have this nonsense about people having to sign the road maintenance agreement, it's attached to the deed, that's part of the requirement, and that's part of your deed, your encumbrance.
So, but is it written back to way?
It says that it's required to file a road.